Good afternoon, everyone. And welcome to the April 6, 2020 work session of the Salisbury City Council. I'd like to welcome everybody that's participating on Zoom. And I'd like to start off the meeting with the first item and Business Development Director Laura Soper. We'll talk about a resolution for revolving loan fund payment for Shamrock Hospitality Group. Laura?
Good afternoon, everyone. I am bringing a loan deferment to council to vote on. Back in May, council approved the funding of Shamrock Hospitality Group from the city's revolving loan in the amount of $99,000, I think. And obviously, given the current pandemic, their operations have been shuttered, so they aren't able to bring in a revenue stream and have asked for a deferment of their loan package. In speaking with them, they would be comfortable with a 12-month deferment. We've talked to some other banks that are offering either six or 12-month deferments, so that seems to be the norm. And they've asked for a 12-month deferment, so this resolution would just essentially allow us to defer their loan and any interest associated with it for a year.
Laura, the amount, the loan amount is $99,953.59.
Yes.
And the only, the only question that I have looking at it, it says it would be 12 months after the announcement of the end of the mandated restaurant dine-in closure period.
Yes.
So the clock will start ticking at that point when it's closed. The pandemic has closed.
Yes, when they lift the ban, that would give them, it would be 12 months, and then after 12 full months, they would begin paying again. The owner did offer that they would likely begin paying before that, but obviously, they want to be able to build up some cash reserves in advance.
Right. I'll ask now in order for comments or questions from the other council members. Mr. Boda, any thoughts or comments or questions?
I think this is appropriate, given that the restaurant just opened earlier this year, and they really were just about getting started. So I think, I think this is the right thing to do.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Blake?
I would concur with Mr. Boda. I think it's appropriate. I think it's appropriate.
Thank you very much. Ms. Gregory?
I think it's the right thing to do. I mean, we, I'm totally okay with it.
Okay. It seems that we have consensus. Ms. Soper, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is an ordinance to approve an agreement with DPL for electrical, electric vehicle charging station. And I understand we have two guests on, on the conference call from DPL. So Ms. Pollock, take over, please.
Good afternoon, everyone. So Delmarva Power has approached us to put in two electric vehicle charging stations in city parking lot number 15. And Lot 15 is the one that's located down near the old Feldman's building, Gilkerson's building. These two electric vehicle charging stations would serve four parking spaces. So for them to be able to do this, Delmarva Power is seeking a right-of-way agreement to show that, that they have our permission to put their equipment in our parking lot. This project is fully funded by Delmarva Power. They are not seeking for the city to pay for anything. They have a program that funds this. So that is what is before you today, is the ordinance to grant the right-of-way. And I will pause here in case anyone who is on from Delmarva Power would like to speak.
Can you hear me, Amanda?
Yes.
Hi, this is John Petito from Delmarva Power. Amanda is correct, we'd like to have two EV Level 2 charging stations installed at Lot 15, no charge to the city. We'd basically be using a parking spot or two to use the EV charging stations for anyone in, any, to use at any time, just trying to get ahead of the curve, knowing that these electric vehicle charging station, vehicles are coming more the merrier. And we have been assigned by the Maryland Public Service Commission to install 100 on the eastern shore. So we are reaching out to all of our partners to see if there are any locations that they would like to have a charging station. And hopefully, this is the first of a couple in city limits. We've also reached out to the county and working with them as well.
Thank you. Just for everybody's knowledge, it looks like, based on the map that I'm looking at, it's the first two spaces in the middle aisle on the right-hand side as you face from Camden Street, and it's closest to the street. So that's the location of these. I think it's a great idea, and I'm, hopefully, that over the next several years, it'll be a growing situation. Mr. Boda, any comments or questions?
No, I'm, I'm good with this.
Ms. Blake?
I think it's a fantastic idea.
Okay. Mrs. Gregory?
I think it's fantastic. This is one of the biggest questions I get all the time, so I'm really excited that we're starting to see these show up.
Great. We have consensus, then, we'll move on. Thank you, Mrs. Pollock. Oh, but you're here again, so. Next, we have a budget amendment for Mount Herman Road sewer extension. Ms. Pollock, floor is yours.
Okay, so this is accepting a low-interest loan from the state of Maryland. It's the Maryland Water Quality Financing Administration. And the city council had passed an ordinance back in August of 2018, allowing us to pursue this low-interest financing for this specific project on Mount Herman Road. This is a sewer extension project to serve two houses that are within the city limits that currently have septic systems. They are the only two properties in city limits that we are aware of that are on septic system. So this is a great thing for us to finally be able to connect them to sewer. So since the time that we passed that original ordinance authorizing us to pursue that financing, the project has been designed, it's gone out to bid, we have awarded it contention upon this financing coming through. This is the last step on our standpoint. This is the budget amendment to actually accept the low-interest loan. It's in the amount of $120,000, and to put that money in an account. The state of Maryland has a final step, and that is approval at a State Board of Public Works meeting. And when I put this memo together, we were scheduled for the May 6 meeting. I've since been notified where we've been moved up a meeting, so April 22nd. So that's, that's great. So by the time, if, if all of this goes through properly and, and without an issue, then by the end of April, we would be clear to be able to set up a pre-construction meeting with the contractor. So this is essentially just moving along with the process of accepting this loan and putting the funds in the account. This is a typical loan from the state of Maryland, like our treatment plan, where we expend the funds first, and then I file for reimbursement and get the money back once we have a canceled check. So this will operate just like other loans and grants we've had from the state of Maryland.
Fantastic. Thank you very much. This is great. We're sure these are the last two, or we don't? We're not sure?
I hope so.
Okay.
As far as we know, they're the last two, and, and, you know, if we find any more, we will happily connect them to the sewer system, but, you know, as we, as we annex, we're likely to pick up some more areas with septic systems, but these are the two that we know of in city limits.
Thank you very much. It's a great move, great, great idea. Mr. Boda, comments or questions?
No, I think this is a great idea, and glad we can get the last two properties in city limits off the sewer system, or septic systems. Yeah, so I'll support it.
Agreed. Ms. Blake?
Fantastic. Go for it. I like it.
Okay. Thank you. Mrs. Gregory?
Go for it. Yep, all for it.
Fantastic. All right. Thank you, Mrs. Pollock. Appreciate it very much. Next up on the agenda is a budget amendment to cover the shortfall in November 9, 2019 election budget. And I see that we have Dionne on the, on the phone. And first of all, let me thank you and Anthony for getting, giving the responses to the questions so that we had a time to look at them before the meeting. We really appreciate it. Do you have anything further you'd like to say about this, about the, this bill?
Anthony is also on the line as well.
Oh. Yes, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yeah, it's fine.
Okay. Again, thank you very much. We certainly want to be, as I said a few weeks ago, we want to be as transparent as possible so that the city council and the clerk and the city election board are all comfortable with our processes. So we would just stand for further questions if you like. I'll, I'll poll the, the council before I make my comments to see if they have any more follow-up questions. So, Mr. Boda, any comments or questions?
No, I appreciate their patience with us trying to make sure, you know, that we do our due diligence and that we appreciate their cooperation.
Okay.
No additional questions at this time.
Thank you. Mrs. Gregory?
No more questions. I appreciate all the, the work that they've done and, and the time that they spent putting all this information together for us.
Thank you. Thank you. Anthony, this, this is Jack again, and, and let me see if, doing my job that I'm doing, it's, it's kind of hard when you get into position like this. And like I said, I appreciate the information that's been, been given to you, but our budget really has no room, so the only way that this is going to get through is, is to have a budget amendment, which this is a, this was a very heavy impact on our budget. Our budget isn't that large to begin with. And I'm wondering if there's any way that we could get some relief from a portion of this bill. Can you hear me? Yes. I can certainly request the county administration work with me to find room to do that. Absolutely, I will do that. And second, going ahead in the future, I'd just like to repeat, as I said at the last meeting, we're very open to adding additional measures to the agreement, such as a much more itemized list of the work that we do, similar to a law firm would do when they charge you, they give you down to the quarter hour. We're very happy to include that. We don't have that now, but we're happy to do that for future. I mentioned before that there are lots of unforeseen circumstances when you pass a budget estimate in January, and then the state makes changes in the middle in the, of that particular year, which did come up later. And I think perhaps Dionne might be able to address, there seemed to be some confusion on the $4,500 estimate. The, this worksheet that we provided to the city clerk, February 5th, I believe, was the noted date in her letter, that, that was only a partial of the $23,000. Dionne, did you want to speak to that?
Well, as I had told Ken before, as far as the work that we do, as far as the office staff, the full-time and part-time staff, it was generally the same amount that we did in 2015. So the estimate that you gave, our work was the same, so I'm, I'm not sure what you wanted me to speak on as far as that.
Yes, yes, that's, that's a good point to make, Dionne. Thank you. And so for the council, what I'm trying, the point I'm making is, the salaries were actually very similar to 2015. It was the other parts of the election billing that took it over. So I think the last meeting, the, the can, the question centered around, well, why was the, there's so much more billing for staff time? It really wasn't. If, if you look at the overall billing, and, and I'm looking at the packet that, that was online, let me go back to that. If I could find that. The packet for today's meeting shows the invoice, I'm not sure what page, 29, I think, or 30, there it is, page 30. The estimate was $20,552 for staff services, and then you look further down, it gives a total of $26,171. So the $20,552 was consistent with our estimate provided back in February of, estimate of $22,500. So if you, if you look at the February 5th, 19, which I believe the clerk mentioned in her letter, yes, yes, second paragraph on page 28 of your packet there, that, that was actually closer to the actual salaries, but again, it doesn't, it doesn't change the fact that, yes, we did bill you more, it just wasn't in services, is when the other parts of the election, which I mentioned also, the paper ballot is, process is more expensive, it was our first one, but we're happy to make whatever changes in the future to the way we work with city clerk, city election board. I can give them regular updates of accounting expenses up to date, whatever we can to make you more comfortable, but certainly, I'll, I'll check with the county administration and try to find places where we can cut that billing down. I'll be glad to do that. Great. I appreciate that very much. Mr. Mayor?
I'll defer to the vice president for now.
Okay.
Jack, on paragraph two, where they just state, he mentions where we had one of the candidates was requesting a citywide recount, how much did that cost to prepare for that potential recount even though it was canceled?
This is Anthony again. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. And again, I apologize, up till now, we haven't really itemized our work because we haven't been requested, so I'm afraid I can't give you that, but Dionne, I'm not sure if we, how we did that, Dionne?
The totals that we turned in on the spreadsheet is just the total hours, so the itemized portion of it, we would have to send that back to you. We just turned in the worksheet with the total hours for each employee and how much their hourly rates were. But as far as what was done individually for everyone and the hours for that specific line, we can turn that back into you. We don't have that on the spreadsheet.
Because I would, I think one of the things we, we should try to also have a estimate for in the future, we have a similar situation where a candidate requests a recount, is to know how much that cost would be, including preparation and including the actual implementation of it. So if there's pre-cost to it, and we have a situation where they say, yeah, I want a recount, and then they change their mind, but you go into motion, and that costs. I think, you know, it's either you do it or you don't. And I think we've got to maybe work with the election board to come up with a process. Because again, you know, if that was a couple thousand dollars, you know, who knows how much it costs? I don't know if it was that much, but it still was obviously a piece of the puzzle on that situation. So I think, you know, that might be a, a future discussion to have that in there so that when people get into the race and run for office, you know, if you're going to request something, understand it's going to cost approximately this much. But, you know, if it's a situation where it's a really close election, and, and, you know, where it triggers a recount, you know, I don't think the candidates should be responsible for that, especially, I think a lot of states have them where they go into automatic recounts if it's, you know, you know, a few votes. I mean, just look at the Board of Election race last year where they had, you know, Mr. Gosley won by one vote, but during the process, it was back and forth. So that, that I think is, is a different situation.
If I could, if I could, Mr. Tillman, are you there? Mark?
I can speak now.
Oh, okay. If, if, is it not a fact that if the recount had proceeded, the candidate who requested the recount would be billed for that, that amount of money?
That's correct.
Well, let me ask you another question that is a follow-up. Because all, most of the work was done, he could, he actually, Dionne, didn't he drop his request the day before the, the deadline?
He came back and changed it, yes.
Yeah, so there's, there, there was some expense, but, Mr. Tillman, can we, can we bill the candidate for that?
I think under state law, once he petitions for a recount, he is responsible for the costs.
Oh.
He also was supposed to have filed a bond, but he never got there in this case. I don't think any bond was filed. The bond is what is supposed to ensure that the city is reimbursed for the cost of the recount. He withdrew before filing a bond. So the, the answer is, for certainly from the time that he filed his petition up until the time he withdrew it, to the extent that this, that costs were incurred, he should be liable for those.
Gotcha. Mr. Gutierrez?
Yes.
If you could get me that number, I would appreciate it. And then we could look at that, and based on the, Mr. Tillman's advice, we could, we could bill the candidate.
Absolutely.
I don't know how much that will be, so let's, let's see what it is, and then before you go back to the council or the administration and ask for relief, let's see what that is.
Absolutely. I'll get that to you tomorrow morning.
Perfect. Anything else from follow-up? Mr. Mayor, you wanted to say something, I think?
Yeah.
You can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, pretty much. Go ahead.
So perhaps we need to do a little internal analysis or breakdown of the expenses as well. If there's anything that we can do to provide clarity internally, I'd like to do that before we, before the council makes a final decision. I'm just looking back at our 2013 allocation. We had $58,900, recognizing that we had two elections at that time, a primary and a general. 2015, we had 30, an allocation of $37,570, and, and this year, the allocation of $51,500. So, you know, there was a significant increase from 15 to 19, and, you know, to, to now be $16,500 over that, you know, I'm, I'm just concerned about the impact, and I want us to be more accurate with our budgeting. So if we can get a little more detail as to what the expenses were that caused that, where exactly we were off on our estimates, I'd feel more comfortable.
Mr. Mayor, what we, what we have done is we've asked some questions at the last work session, and they have responded with that. I'm going to ask Mrs. Nichols to forward you the responses and the, the breakdown that they, they've done.
Questions, but not the response.
Pardon?
I said I have the questions, but not the responses, so if Ms. Nichols can forward those to me, that would be great.
Great. I will, I will, actually, I'll do that as soon as we get out of this meeting.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Mr. Boda?
I'm, I'm okay right now.
Ms. Blake?
No other questions at this time.
Thank you. Mrs. Gregory?
No questions.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Anthony and Dionne, thank you very much for, for participating. We appreciate it. We appreciate the work you, you've done, and let's get that number for us if you could. Anthony, you said tomorrow, that'd be great, and then we'll go, we'll proceed from there. Thank you very much for joining us.
Very welcome. Very welcome. Thank you.
Before we, we adjourn, I'd like to take special time to thank PAC-14 for covering these meetings. This is not the easiest thing to do. It's a lot simpler when we're all sitting in a room. And I thank them, Keith and Craig, and the rest of the team for allowing us to have these meetings on Zoom. Any words of wisdom from the council members? Mr. Boda?
Councilwoman Jackson did join the meeting. She's on now, so.
Oh, thank you. Okay.
I just, I just hope everybody stays safe and, and be healthy, and if you have people that need help, your neighbors or your family, please help them, please help them with their groceries, help them with things that they need, especially if you know people who should be home and should not be out in the public. The key is, is to protect them, take care of them, and the best of us, we can, we can carry that burden. And just really looking forward to getting our city back, you know. I've been enjoying food coming to my house, but I, I like to go out, I like to go to some of the places, be with our friends and family. So just everyone be well. I love y'all.
Thank you, Mayor. April?
All I can say is to be safe, stay healthy, some of the same things that Mira just said. I've been sick, as you all know, but I'm getting better day by day, and I just want everybody to know how serious this pandemic is. COVID-19 is something very serious, and we should take it as that, we should be mindful, as Mira said, we should take care one another, but we also should do social distancing. And for my first time, I ate out at a restaurant, and it wasn't the same. So I just pray and hope that the United States comes back, and comes back stronger than ever before, and that we all stay together, stick together, and love one another as we should.
Thank you. Thank you, April. Ms. Blake?
I just want to really thank our city administrator, Julia, and our mayor for leading the effort in all of the things that are happening in Salisbury, and hitting every angle, from the humanitarian angle, from our economic angle, just a safety angle, this, it just, from the top down, I think it's been really well done. And I just appreciate, because I know the hours that people are putting in, our city employees, I see them out there doing their thing, and I'm just amazed, I just love Salisbury more and more every day. And I just really, really do give my hat off to our city. We are very fortunate at this point. My son is living in, he lives in Manhattan, and it's been a little bit interesting talking to him and seeing things through his eyes, and I've been literally trying to hustle up hand sanitizer, Clorox Lysol wipes, which you all know are hard to get a hold of, especially masks and that stuff, and I have to mail it to him, there is nothing there. He's literally been in his apartment for probably, I want to say, five, going on six weeks, he's not been outside of his apartment. So they get, and then the food delivery is getting more and more minimal. It, it's, it's hard to get food delivery, it's hard to get... It, it's, it's hard to get food delivery. It's hard to get even your order filled or, so, you know, we're very blessed the planning and the organization we have here from PRMC, from the Health Department on down. But things are really grim in other parts of the country, and just keep everybody in your prayers.
Thank you, Ms. Blake. Mr. Gregory?
Hard to follow that, but I, I just want to say thank you to all of our health workers. I've seen how hard you guys work in the ICU on a day that's just like any other day. But in, in conditions like these, I, I just take my hat off to you, and I, I'm just hoping for the best for you guys and, and stay healthy. And it, guys, if you don't have to go out, everybody else in Salisbury, if you don't have to go out, don't go. Stay home, please. As someone with a, a child who ticks off half the list of vulnerabilities, I just, please stay home. Don't let this spread any further than it already has.
Thank you, Mrs. Gregory. As a final note, I want to thank all people, regardless of what they're doing, that are essential workers. It's amazing. You, you don't even think about it, but I went to pick up prescription today that I needed. And I drove up to the drive-in window, and the, the gals standing there with a mask, smile, what can I do for you? They're putting their lives on the line. She had a mask on that she says she's going to have to wear for a week. I have two words of wisdom from a, an old guy. First, if you're not essential, stay home, period. And second, please be Salisbury strong. We always are, we always will be. Thank you, everybody. Our meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.